Meeting is called to order for the special city council meeting, March 31st, 2016. Madam Clerk, the pledge please.
Councilman Bodier is absent. Councilman Benton?
Present.
Councilman Hewitt?
Present.
Councilman Johnston?
Present.
Councilman Wheeler?
Present.
Mayor Misselli?
Present.
Police Chief Walker?
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer is absent. And City Attorney Bures.
I'd just like to make a few opening remarks. We have some congratulations to go to our first responders. Sergeant Thomas Bronk, firefighter William Cunningham. We're both honored at the VFW Post 3267 for their outstanding service. Officer Bronk was named Police Officer of the Year and firefighting Cunningham was firefighter of the year. So we're very proud of them and we appreciate their hard work and dedication and what they bring to our community. I'd also like to announce to everyone that we will be having a town hall meeting on the sewage issues that are happening in our city. That will be for our residents here at, in the council chambers. That will be Monday, this coming Monday, April 4th at 6:00 PM. I encourage everyone to come. We'll be putting it on, it should be on the website already. I'll double check that for everyone. The budget is up for vote tonight. I encourage the council to please consider the importance of getting a budget passed in a timely manner. We're already late as far as timeliness and it's difficult to run our city without a budget in place. So I'm just going to encourage everyone to proceed. Address the council. We will now open, address the council to the public. Anyone who wishes to address the council, please come up to the podium. Please state your name, your address. You have three minutes. I wish everyone to refrain from any inflammatory comments. Also, that the only speakers that will be recognized from, will not be from their seats. It's only when you come and address the council. So thank you.
Well, this time I don't have a paper in front of me. So I didn't want one because I don't need to repeat myself every month. I think some of the residents saying, "You're saying the same thing over and over." So give everybody a break with that one. Helpful information is very good. But I would like to address this new ordinance that's coming out. I'd like to thank every one of the council members who came to our house. Thank all five of you. It was very, very lovely having you at our home with us. We are concerned about ordinance 13, there are 20 XX and the rest of those X's. We're very concerned about that. We feel like the issues that are in that ordinance, as far as barge mooring, barge mooring, they've been back there a long time with barge mooring. And I think there's a, there's a thing that you've been somewhere five years, you know, that you kind of got it. So I think that they've definitely passed the five years. Barge mooring to us is not a really big deal because it's parking barges out there. One problem with it is they kind of bang together. But I think if it's past five years, I don't think there's anything that we can really do about it, you know? Second of all, unloading barges, that is not allowed in ordinance 1333. Under permitted uses is not unloading barges. We see a lot of piles of sand back there that hasn't been back there before because we watch this place very carefully without harassing them. We do that. And I'm sure the dump trucks didn't come dump it back there. Their job is to take it from back there. So it got back there, the only way we can figure it got back there was via a barge. So that is definitely not allowed. It's not allowed, it's not under permitted use. The next thing that this new ordinance addresses is the noise operations that they can run their trucks. I don't think that we really need to put it in the section of the sand batches. I think we can go to the noise tolerance or whatever that is. We have that in 1333 where it addresses noise. I think that you can just go there to that, that certain area and you can put, which was very nice, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I don't know how much it's going to work because we went to the airport project in Kenner and they can only run their trucks at nighttime, which is 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM or whatever that is. The problem with running trucks at nighttime is people are trying to sleep. So you have the beep 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 that's all night long. And I know they're supposed to be on the trucks. It's a safety thing, but it's very aggravating when you have children that have to go to school and it's beep beeps. So I think that the beep beeping is going to be a really bad thing. But the trucks have to run at night according to the airport. We went there for the Kenner meeting. And if they run at night, they're going to also be going down streets they don't belong to go down because every road, every load you bring is more money for you. They're going to be running down streets. The police is already going to be busy. Okay.
Hello, John Ream, Three Grand Pass. We are concerned about the amendment to the ordinance 1333 because 1333 stood up in court and we shared that with everybody. That what happened back in 1988 in Carlo's administration, that they actually went to court and Wood brought a suit up against Harahan and the East Jefferson Levy District. And what happened is that the court ruled, the final ruling was that Harahan could keep the batches in the same way that they were running before without unloading material, which they were trying to do, and expanding their facilities in the back to make a barge mooring facility, a big structure back there, and increase their workload back there. Well, through the years, the workload has increased with the sand. So this is something that we need to address in this situation here. But also, and this was 1998, they had the ruling on it and Wood could not do the things he wanted to do, offload. And one of the things was limestone, but others was construction material. And my understanding is sand is construction material too. So you can't unload anything back there because the ordinance states barge mooring and holding facilities, and they have nothing else about unloading or loading back there. That's permitted uses only if that. The 2008, under Paul Johnson's administration, they addressed, they went to the Corps of Engineers and they just addressed the ruling from 1988 and they denied the permit for them to offload limestone. So we have legal precedents that they cannot unload barges. And the only thing with, you know, making an amendment, we don't want it to lose its solidarity, you know? We don't want it to be weakened in any kind of way. So that is a big concern. I'm not done, 6 to 6 is really nice, you know, if we can get them to run in that situation. But can we address that in noise ordinance? You know, we'd have to make a special feature in there for the batcher area, but to address that, no work going on there from 6 to, 6:00 PM at night to 6:00 AM in the morning. Harahan is a residential area behind the levee, commercial, whatever. They make noise if they, you know, doing things, but normally they didn't do that. They worked in the daytime and that was it. They shut off, you know? This is the normal operation that they have back there. They don't work at night, so they shouldn't be allowed to work at night back there. So that's what we bring it up. We don't want to weaken anything on the amendment. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Denise Neri Bernard. I live at number one Elodie Avenue on River Road in Harahan, three blocks from Powell Line where all this construction and these trucks are coming back and forth, back and forth. I have been here for 22 years and I have to say that I've also noticed that the weakening of the levee is a critical situation. There is seepage underneath that levee every time after a rain. And you can go down River Road and for weeks after that rain, water is seeping from underneath that levee. Those trucks going up and down, up and down, up and down over those levees are weakening that levee. And one day, it's going to break if those, if the river expands. We need to address the fact that that levee is getting very weak. All along there where they put all that pumping to the river and all that, well, on both sides of those pumps is very weak now. And it leaks and you can go all the way down to the industrial, almost to the U.P. Long Bridge and you can see where the water's leaking underneath those levees. It comes across, my car's a mess. It's, it's, all the cars that come in and out of there are filthy because the water is seeping and seeping. Yeah, they have the truck out there cleaning it, cleaning it. For what? It just, the next time it rains, the mud is coming out from underneath there, the leakage is coming out. And that's a big concern and you, as a council, need to look at that concern because it's affecting Harahan and it's going to affect us if we have a flood. And that's all I have to say.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. Couple of comments. On March 25th, ASHA came out with its rule on workforce exposure to silica. Silica is a carcinogenic. So people who are exposed to it 28 hours a day, workforces are going to have to put in controls to limit that exposure. ASHA doesn't pertain to residents. The residents are exposed to silica 24 hours a day. We need the assistance of environmental engineers and environmental lawyers to measure the particle size of sand that is coming across the levee and to figure out what we can do with these various agencies that give permits, licenses, permissions for wood resources to operate. The Corps of Engineers, the Department of Natural Resources, the Department of Environmental Quality, the Department of Agriculture, Jefferson Parish, and the East Jefferson Levy District each give permissions to wood resources to operate. I suggest that the mayor send a letter to eat the heads of each of these agencies and let them know that for over 30 years, the operations of wood resources have been of great concern to the residents of Harahan. And therefore, in any request for a permit, in any complaints that are given to these agencies concerning operations on the levee, that Harahan be notified. Harahan seems to be too often out of the loop. And yet, it is our government that is most responsible for the quality of life here. So if there's anybody that knows any environmental lawyers, any environmental engineers, we need to have some testing done and we need to figure out how we can get agencies to stop giving permits, permission for this nuisance that we have all recognized for 35 years in our community.
Hello. About, my daughter was diagnosed with multiple-
Do you mind stating your name?
Oh, Kay Mitchell, 41 Oak Avenue. Moved here from uptown. My vision was to have a, to scale down, be in a safe neighborhood, and eventually buy the blighted house next to me for my daughter. My daughter has multiple sclerosis. There is no way I would now buy the blighted house next to me and move my daughter here. So had I known any of this, I would have never moved to Harahan. So, you know, it's like everything I tried to do is like, really, I'm going to bring my daughter to this? You know, come on, put us first. You know, these people, these saying, "They don't care about us." Care about us. We matter more than these businesses do. Just protect us. You know, it's our accent. Protect us because this is, this could be an amazing place. It already is. But this one thing is horrible and nobody should have to go through that. Nobody. Protect us. That's your job. Protect us, please.
We will now close, address the council, resolutions. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the resolution and then we'll have Mr. Hugh Martin come up and speak about the resolution.
Okay. The following resolution was offered by, would you all like to do this unanimously? Unanimously by the council. A resolution giving preliminary approval to the issuance of not to exceed $2 million of public improvement refunding bonds of the City of Harahan, State of Louisiana, providing certain terms of said bonds, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Mr. Martin, we'd love for you to come up and, I'd like to also let everyone know, Mr. Hugh Martin is with Foley and Jiddell. He is an attorney. He is an esteemed resident. He is a former city attorney for the City of Harahan. He was reminding me of that, he served in that capacity for over 20 years, correct?
Right.
So congratulations. You might get a special service award.
Oh, thank you. In fact, one of my former mayors is sitting right, right here.
And he continues to serve.
My neighbor.
Mind you. And so he continues to serve the community, always looking out for our best interest.
Thank you, thank you for those kind words, my dear ladies and gentlemen of the governing body. The City of Harahan in 2006 issued some bonds which actually refinanced other bonds that had been issued prior to that, that time. These bonds are now still outstanding. They are now at a point where they can be refunded without the necessity of paying a premium or an additional cost above the principal amount for the refunding of the bonds. The resolution which you have before you is a preliminary resolution which authorizes the, an application to be submitted to the State Bond Commission for authority to go forward with a refunding of these bonds. And it also does two other things. It employs my firm as bond counsel and it employs Mr. Lee Bressler who is here, who is with Raymond James, underwriters, as a municipal, and him serves as a municipal financial advisor to be employed. The reason for that is that there have recently been changes in federal law with the Dobbs-Frank Bill in Congress and also additional regulations made by the Security and Exchange Commission which designated certain roles for the professionals who work on this type of bond issue. And they require that bond lawyers in their services, which is what I am, can limit their services to legal matters and related matters and provide information on methods of finance, but not to get involved in making financial, giving financial advice. Financial advice is necessary now to have a financial advisor, which is what Mr. Bressler The laws will permit you to go forward if you adopt this resolution to apply to the State Bond Commission and get authority from them to actually issue, sell, and deliver bonds. Now, the effect of these bonds would be to have a refunding of the existing bonds, which is very similar to having your mortgage refinanced at a low interest rate. We all know over recent years how low interest rates have gotten and many, many people have refinanced their mortgage. And this is a similar transaction. The new bonds are sold at a lower interest rate than the old existing bonds, the 2006 bonds are paid now. And when the transaction is, if it's a favorable transaction, when it is over, you'll make a reduced payment for the retirement of the debt, which results in a savings to the city. And as Lee will be able to tell you, since I'm no longer permitted to do that, what that savings could be. And the matter, it would be rather routine. Many, many municipalities and local governments who have through continuously, when it becomes possible, refinance their bonds. There are some savings to be realized and, and Lee, who is here, Lee Bressler, would be the one who can tell you what the numbers look like. I would like to, at this point, defer to him, mayor, if possible, and he can go into the numbers and then we'll come back on adopting the resolution.
And welcome, Mr. Bressler.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Lee Bressler with Raymond James. I've worked with Mr. Martin off and on on a number of transactions, including the 1996 transaction that was a refunding. We were an underwriter at that point. My firm bought the bonds and resold them to investors. In this case, because the issue size has gotten much smaller, we're looking to find one investor to buy the whole issue. We haven't gone out and talked to anybody yet, but there's a number of local commercial banks that we think would be interested in this issue and we plan on talking. We've identified at least five and there's others that we're also going to talk to as well. Your current bonds have an interest rate of about four and a half percent, which doesn't seem very high, but in today's market, we think you could refinance at less than 3%. We assume 2.75. That was our estimate based, and that's what these numbers will be based on. We won't know the interest rate until we get it, get out and start talking to these investors. And again, you all are just giving us permission to proceed, but we have to come back and will come back with the final numbers for your final approval. So nothing is set in stone until we get our information, make sure it's, we think is acceptable and something that we could recommend, and come back to you all for that. So if you look on page two, these bonds are actually secured by three different sales taxes. You have a one-half cent from 1954, a half cent from 1966, and a third cent, which was really, they call it two-thirds of one-half cent, but it's a third, adopted in 1981. The sheriff's office actually sends you your taxes in two different packets. They send 1% and put it in the bond sinking fund and they send the rest of it and you all put it in your general fund. We're recommending that we get that changed so that everything that's pledged to the bonds flows through your sinking fund and that will help you get a lower interest rate. It's the same, but it looks better to investors to see all the money flow through so they know for sure that there's that much coverage there. So we're going to work with the mayor and the finance director to try to get that changed so that the two pots are split differently to be more, more in line with the way that basically the resolution says you all are going to do that. As far as the collections, if you look on page three, we went back to the audit and looked at the, the whole sales tax collection of 2.55. We looked at the 1% that they sent over and we came up with the number of the 1.33, which is actually what's pledged to the bonds. And historically, that's been anywhere from 730,000 to about a million dollars. So that's the, the security for the bonds is what's coming into that 1.33%. We also looked at who the top 10 taxpayers were in 2014, the last year of your audit. And over to the right-hand side, you can see the 10 listed in alphabetical order. They can't give us who paid what, but these are the top 10. And they also told us that those top 10 combined paid about $475,000 worth of taxes, which is about 25%. So that's pretty good that the top 10 only comprise 25%. We've seen situations where the top payer sometimes is 50 or 75% of the sales tax. So it's a very good diversified tax base. And the number one person, we don't know who it is, but it's somebody on here, only paid 92,000. So again, it's about 5% came from the largest taxpayer. So we're not at the whim of one big retailer, you know, closing and you all having a problem. If you look at the next page, on page four, you can see that the, these bonds, as Mr. Martin said, are currently callable. And the State Bond Commission has to approve every bond issue that's done in the state and they have certain parameters. And anything that's currently callable, they said, "Anything you save is good" because once you get past the call date, you're, you're losing time, you're losing a chance to save money. They have stricter tests for bonds that are years and years from the call date. This is about twice as much as the strictest test. So this has 8% present value savings. The most that they require for any issue would be 5% and you're more, like I said, you'd be in the 1 to 3% range. So this is three or four times what's required by the State Bond Commission, just as another way to know that it makes sense. Again, assuming we can get somebody to buy it at the rates we think we can. If you look on page five, you can see what the savings are. We're reducing the debt service from about 275,000 a year to about 250,000 a year. So it's about 20 to 25,000 dollars a year that you're currently paying to bondholders of sales tax money that you won't have to pay to them. So that'll free up money from the sales tax. If you look on page six, you can see that we, we actually looked at it two different ways. We included the '07 bonds in the calculation, just even though they're not secured by the sales tax, they're generally being paid by the sales tax. So we looked at what the debt service would be, including it. It's about 325,000 and like I said, it's about 250,000 with it. If you look on page seven, I'm buzzing through this pretty quick, but if y'all have questions, let me know. You can see on page seven that we've got the historical sales tax collections that are pledged to the bonds. We've got the 325,000, which includes the '07 bonds, and we're still two to three times. We collect two to three times as much as what we need to pay out. So your sales tax could go down by 50% and the bondholders would still get paid. So they're going to feel pretty good about this bond, that they're going to get paid and we're hoping that will translate into a lower interest rate because of how secure the bonds are. After next year, once you pay off the '07 bonds, you've got three to four times coverage. So again, sales tax could go down by two-thirds and they would still get paid because they get first claim on those revenues. So that's the financial analysis. Again, we're, it's very preliminary. We're just trying to get the first step, go to the State Bond Commission, prepare a packet with all this information in detail, send it to a number of different potential purchasers, get input back from them. We're going to look at some different structures. We've got some ideas from the mayor about maybe we want to make these bonds callable so you might be able to pay it out off early. We'll see how that affects the interest rate. And we'll come back to you with a recommendation, either wait or, you know, pick the best deal and then you guys can make a decision at that point to proceed or not proceed. And if you do, then very shortly, the bonds would get delivered and you'd be paying the lower scheduled debt service and there would be more money left over from the sales tax.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Martin or Mr. Lee? That, well, thank you. You must have done such a complete job that you've answered all our questions.
It's a bad job.
No, I just want to clarify that this resolution allows these gentlemen to see what potentially is out there, what the offers are. Then it will come back before the council in a, in a resolution form again for the council to decide whether or not to proceed. And we're expecting that the soonest we could have this in place is by June, correct?
End of June.
End of June. Okay. So that would be potentially some very good economic news for our citizens to help with our budget. Thank you very much. That being said, since there's no other discussion, do I have a motion to, to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent, no nays, and the resolution is passed. Gentlemen, thank you for your hard work upfront on this issue. Gentlemen, thank you for your hard work upfront on this issue. Y'all look forward to hearing from you very soon, so thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend the agenda, to reintroduce the ordinance concerning the bachelor.
Do I have a second to amend the agenda, to introduce the ordinance? I have a second by Councilman Hewitt. We will proceed with vote, all in favor to amend the agenda, to add the ordinance for first reading?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent, no nays. The agenda is now amended to, to introduce. Ms. Benton, if you, if we can ask the Madam Clerk to help us hand some out to, you still have it?
No problem. Thank you.
I don't know if Mr. Bures wanted to, was prepared to answer any of the concerns that the board needs to discuss.
Well, I do have a question. Can we ask something? Even if it's for a first reading? There's this question out there, if you can amend or you should amend, is this a favorable thing? Should we do this? If it's the hour change, which Councilman Benton brought forth, or any additional changes to thirteen thirty-three? In your opinion, is, is that a favorable thing for us to do and to look into?
I would prefer to give you my opinion of private system matters.
Okay. One other question, too, and this has just been brought by me reading through thirteen thirty-three of it stating, if you amend thirteen thirty-three, that it needs to go to planning and zoning for a recommendation first. Is that the process, or would we, does, does the council have heard you to go ahead and make the change without planning and zoning recommendation?
What's your normal practice on a tax change? Do you send it to your, I didn't even know that you had a planning advisory committee?
Yeah, our Blue Municipal Code states the process for us is to go to planning and zoning if you make a change to thirteen thirty-three. So I read it that way. I'm not sure if I'm understanding it appropriately, but I believe that's what the body of the planning and zoning has a duty.
It is a tax change.
You say tax?
A tax. Yes, a tax.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I had no idea that you had that procedure.
Okay.
You have a month, so.
Yeah, and I, I think they meet every month, so we would make edits, changes, and in the form, we all agree, would go to planning and zoning, they would make a recommendation, and come back to the board for a vote?
Well, it would, it would, the ordinance in present form would go to your planning advisory, planning advisory board, but then make suggestions of any of the other changes. And then if you have anything that you want to add or change in this proposed ordinance, by all means, you can put that in a new form matter in front of the planning and zoning board.
Okay. So the folks that come to discuss thirteen thirty-three and the sand issue and all of these nuisances that they're experiencing, they should attend planning and zoning? That night it comes in front of them so that planning and zoning can hear their, their concerns or their thoughts?
And, and the point made by an earlier speaker about having objective references to a particular matter as a relative observation.
No.
And so, for, for, you need the science.
Absolutely. Should we read the ordinance by title, since it's?
Yeah.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton, an ordinance to amend and reordain, ordinance number thirteen thirty-three, section seven, relative to the zoning classifications, sorry, non-urban bachelor district, Harahan Municipal Code nineteen ninety, appendix A, by amending subsection B thereof, relative to permitted uses, by adding there to a new subsection governing the hours of operation of commercial enterprises therein, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Thank you.
And, just to let you, I am suffering, of course.
I'm just recovering, I got it.
Just to let you know, I, I anticipate that there will be amendments to this proposed ordinance that deal with the height of the sand piles out there, which the Army Corps of Engineers already has a regulation regarding. And I also expect there will be some additional amendments that, regarding the tarp and covers on the trucks and the direction in which they're going to travel. The Army Corps of Engineers made a, a return on a Freedom of Information Act request, and I've been through probably two thousand documents, but I did find a, a letter in nineteen eighty-four from the Army Corps to then-Mayor Farrar. And at that time, the, the issue of the sand piles was addressed as follows by the Army Corps. That wood materials would refuse to load any sand haul trucks that didn't have a serviceable tarp, that the permittee will remove accumulations of sand that fall from trucks onto river road, that a sand fence not less than four feet high will be placed on top of the active sand pit retention levees located parallel to and adjacent to the mainline levee. This sand fence will be maintained for at least three years until native vegetation is firmly established on the retention levees. That wood materials would allow the outside slope of the retaining levee and the levee crown located parallel to and adjacent to the mainline levee to vegetate with native vegetation. This vegetation will be allowed to, to remain so as to function as a windscreen to control blowing sand. That the retention levees and stockpile height will not exceed the height of the adjacent mainline levee. Sand from the perimeter drainage ditch excavation may not exceed the height of the retention levees by more than four feet. That was offered on August the ninth, nineteen eighty-four, and on August fifteenth, nineteen eighty-four, Mayor Farrar replied, "I have reviewed the five conditions as stated in your letter of August ninth. I find them to be in accordance with the agreement reached by all parties involved, Harahan elected officials, sand operators, and report of engineers. So therefore, let this matters, let this letter serve as your letter of no objection to the issuance of their permit, and also withdraw a request for a public hearing." So apparently, in nineteen eighty-four, a lot of this had already been addressed. Now, how it fell off the radar in thirty years, I'm not really aware, but everything I read in this letter is much of what you've heard from the citizens who want a screen and vegetation and the trucks tarped and the road cleared. Now, the only issue that's not covered by all of this is the compost pile, which is simply not a permitted use.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Since Mr. Kevin Johnson's no longer employed, I heard that we hired someone new to do code enforcement. Do we have someone here at the city that would be riding along and, and enforcing thirteen thirty-three for code enforcement?
We have someone that's, takes all the complaints, has actually done a lot of progress into making it so that we can streamline complaints that come in by phone and documenting them by computer, and to do a complaint via the computer. That's been very recent, so that we can have a continual track and to note all complaints, whether it's online, by phone, et cetera.
What is his name?
This is Bobby Moss, and he is, goes out and is handling the complaints on a regular basis, and whenever we get any complaint, he has to, he is writing down, you know, he documents what has been happening. He's relatively new. I couldn't remember the hire date, so I'll leave it to you, though. I'm working on it. Okay. Madam Clerk, ordinance for adoption. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton, and seconded by Councilman. Who would like to second the budget ordinance? Do we have a second?
I'll second it just to keep it going, but I don't think we're going to be voting on it tonight.
Yeah, I was, I know it was mentioned at the March tenth meeting and also the March seventeenth meeting, that the council, or a majority of the members of the council, wanted to adopt the budget at a regularly scheduled council meeting. Seems to be back and forth about, people don't want things happening in special meetings so they're not highly attended. Initially, before they weren't televised, now they are. So I had reached out to attorney-bureaus to see if there was a way that maybe we could table this ordinance until the Thursday, April twenty-first, regularly scheduled council meeting, and we would adopt the budget at that time. So I'd like to make a, a plea. I can motion to table, because I didn't sponsor the ordinance.
You have to make a motion to defer till the April, what's the date of April?
It's the twenty-first, but we don't want to defer it.
Well, I, I think you're.
Do we have the meeting minutes from that meeting?
No, I have requested March tenth and seventeenth meetings several times. I was told that they were not ready yet.
What, what date do you want to hear this?
On April twenty-first, the regularly scheduled council meeting, to vote on it.
Okay. I think the proper motion is, under your ordinance, two eighty-seven, is a motion to defer until a certain date. That's under subsection eight. But if you want to make it a motion to table, make it a motion to table, but give it a certain date from which you can take it from the table and consider it. You have to give the public a date.
And that's what I'm going to say. I just think the perception for people is when we defer is that the council is just kicking the can down the street again. It was made very clear at the two previous meetings that we were not going to, again, the majority was not going to adopt it, so I'm kind of surprised that it's here.
But, but, so. The correct motion would be, in, in your opinion, is the motion to defer to the April regularly scheduled date, which is April what?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Then it would be already on the agenda automatically, so.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Till the April.
Till the regular April twenty-first.
I have a motion to defer until the April twenty-first meeting. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent, no nays. Ordinance is going to be deferred. I just want to make a brief comment that the city really, in order to function appropriately, needs a budget in place. This has been going on since December. This isn't a surprise. It's been advertised numerous times. I'm a little discouraged of having it postponed again. It's very difficult to operate a city without a budget in place. But thank you.
All right. New business?
New business. Notice is hereby given that the council of the City of Harahan will conduct a public meeting on Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty sixteen, at seven thirty P M. at the Harahan City Hall Council Chambers, sixty-four thirty-seven Jefferson Highway, Harahan, Louisiana, for the purpose of considering and adopting an ordinance levying ad valorem tax milages for twenty sixteen.
We will now open to address the council, to the public. Please remember to come forward. I know some of my friends I see all the time know the rules. Please state your name. You have three minutes, and I'm trying to put my little timer on. Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say, there's a couple things, the timer went off, so getting back up. I'd just like to say in our December eighth meeting with Mr. Wood, we let him know the problems we were having, we let him know how sand was affecting the community, because we had gotten on to talk to the residents. And at that point, we told Mr. Wood what we thought would be a good idea, which y'all all know that, and don't have to repeat that same situation. And that's been four months, you know, I know we said tonight, four months. Well, four months is really hard when sand's all over your stuff. So he had four months to become a good neighbor, you know? I don't see children walking around with baseball jerseys that say wood materials on the back. That would be really nice if it did, the little four-year-olds, it'd be really cute. So I'm just saying that he had a chance to be a good neighbor. All of us should respect our neighbors, and if there's a problem with throwing trash out in front yard, or whatever they're doing, you're like, could you please not do that? And then you might get a little louder the next time. And after four months, it's very like, you need to move, you know? You're just being a really rotten neighbor. So everybody wants him to move at that point, because he just won't listen. So at this point, we tried, always our motto was, be a good neighbor and give us our volunteer life back. Mr. Wood lives in, in City Park, and he rides his bike around the nice City Park area. But I just don't think he's being a good neighbor. And today, I was upset again, because the second tree came on the berm between Chris Law and Pass, and it's another one of those wimpy trees that they dug up from the back, and they didn't get it down good, because it already fell. So, I mean, if you're making millions of dollars, and you have this grand big project coming up, and you're going to make millions or more dollars, do you have to go dig a tree up from your backyard for us? And that is not going to catch sand. He doesn't, as a resident said, he does not care about us. And I think it's time for the mayor to make him care about us. You got it in your ballpark, Mayor. You got the ball, you got the bag. You're the one who can enforce the law. So we're asking you again, please enforce the law, enforce ordinance thirteen thirty-three. It was strong. It was strong in nineteen eighty-eight. It was strong every time it stood. All we need to do is enforce the law, and right now, we should be enforcing penalties on them every day. Actually, one of the penalties is community service. It would be nice if he washed our cars with the sand, and it would be nice if he cleaned our houses and pressure washed. People pay pressure wash their house once a year around here. That's not right. We shouldn't have to breathe this stuff. We don't know how our health is. It's all over the place. And one of the things you treasure more than your children and your wife is your home. You worked thirty years for it. Piss, he doesn't have sand on his home. But I think that he's really showing how much of a bad neighbor he is. Thank you.
I like my nice little buzzer. It's a lot more than I can imagine.
John Reed, three grand passes. The offloading of barges has already begun back there. There is a yellow crane that's on one of the barges, and we've seen them. I thought it was something to do with they pumped to the river, but evidently, it's something, some sand material coming in, and they're putting it in that number two pit, and they're taking their dump trucks and running from that pit. So they need to watch that, and you have a code enforcement man down there, and you can go back there and see what's going on. And you can at least see the increase. I don't know if they're doing it at nighttime now, but I saw it in the middle of the daytime, and they've done it one time. But also, thank you all for addressing this situation. It's kind of hard when you get up here for three minutes and you're talking, people just looking at you, you know? It's, I like people talking back, you know, I like that rapport, back and forth thing. And I think this is great, that we'd be able to go to the planning board, or whatever it is, that we can all get together and talk about things and, and work things out with wood materials. And I think some of the thing is, too, he's on the other side of the levee, it's a company with workers in office, and it gets impersonal. You know, they don't see their residents on one side of the river, the levee, and we don't see the workers on the other side, unless you're walking up on there. But what we need to do is, he needs to get involved with the community. You know, we need to get involved with what he's doing back there, see what he's doing, and make sure he's doing, doing it right, and when you see something that's not supposed to be back there, report it to somebody. And our code enforcement man needs to make routine strolls around there, or drive through, and I think Todd Sincere, they're supposed to go back there and inspect every so often, and maybe Tim Walker can go back there with a dirty up the police car. But just to check on things, you know, make sure everything's on the up and up. Because I lived in K O A campground in River Ridge, we lived there for a year, and Justin Parish Police came in the campground, all the way to the back, came all the way back around again, make sure everybody was abiding by the law. So we need to look into all of that stuff. But we need to be a community. We need to work together, and the council and the mayor needs to work together. We need to get on the right path, you know? And maybe with this thing here, it'd be a start that we'll work together on it. And I think we do need help, like Robert Johnson was saying, that we need to check into particular matter, because when sand gets broken down to less than ten microns, it goes directly into your lungs, and it's a disease, it's a carcinogen, disease-causing material. So we need to look into that, and if we can get somebody to help us, I know Harahan doesn't have a lot of money, but we need, if we're going to take up a collection, I'll give some money, I don't know if I can, but we'll give some money to, to get something going there. So I appreciate y'all, so thank you.
Thank you.
Meekin, Casley, Forty-Sixth, and New Hampshire, Louisiana. We need state. We need state approval for the bond commission, right, to lower the bonds? What happens to the bonds if the city has not passed the two thousand and sixteen budget yet? Would that have any, any leeway with that?
It, it may give some investors pause, yes.
So it could affect the city's borrowing of money, if a budget has not ever been passed yet?
It could be a factor, yes.
Okay. That's all I want to think.
We will now close, address the council. Does the council have any reports?
Does anybody know when the next planning and zoning meeting is? It says they didn't meet in March, and they'll meet again in April. Do you have the date?
The first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
The next planning and zoning, it's the first Wednesday of the month, in, in April.
So that would be April sixth. Do you know what time?
Seven.
Seven P.M. April sixth, Wednesday, seven P.M. Here in the chambers.
Mr. Johnson's wondering if the, the amended to thirteen thirty-three could be on the agenda for the planning and zoning meeting on the sixth, since the agenda's already.
It's already been advertised.
It's already been advertised.
Can we, is there any way to advertise again before that time?
Does it advertise two days before?
That Charlene's. So if there's a possibility, then that would be a really good thing. So if we could do that early tomorrow.
Talk to Charlene about it tomorrow. She advertised, she'd have him coming to the fields.
Would you talk to her?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The FBI has three dogs, three weeks.
Oh, yeah, three weeks.
Oh, that's true.
So when do you tell Mary?
Probably not, yeah.
What, are three weeks?
It's gotta be, I have to have three weeks in row. So probably not, I mean, I'll still need to Charlene, but I'm glad I uncovered that.
Any report, Ms. Hewitt? Anyone else? I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight again. I'd like to thank our special guest, Mr. Martin. It's always a pleasure to have you here as a resident and.
Why Mr. Hughes here? Would you mind talking about the management process that we have called over reassessment here? Could he discuss?
Yes, do you mind just giving us a moment?
Paul, I think, requested that, some advice about different types of millages and which ones do not have to be renewed at the, at an election. And there's two types of millages authorized by the state constitution. Every municipality, including Harahan, is authorized in the constitution levy a seven mil general alimony tax without an election. It's authorized by law. All you have to do is levy it each year when you levy your tax. Now, over the years, I'm not sure when this all happened, I think in several stages, that seven mil tax has been reduced, has been rolled back. You know, every four years, there's a reappraisal, at which time, you roll back the taxes to have them, if there's been an increase in assessor, you roll back the taxes to an amount which will produce the same dollars as was, as was collected the year before. This has happened, I think, several times, and we have actually three general, we have a general alimony tax and a general, and another one for general municipal purposes. Now, what that is, is the seven mil tax authorization can be increased above the seven mils with a one-time election authorized by the voters. And that's what happened in that particular case. So these two taxes should not have to be ever renewed in an election. You still have to levy them, but you don't have to. They do not expire.
We only have one that's going to expire, which is in twenty twenty-four, the one that was just renewed. Out of our four millages?
Yes.
Three out of the four don't expire. And the one, the only one that does expire is the fire millage, which was just renewed last year for ten years. So twenty, we do not have to look at renewing any millages until twenty twenty-four.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Hope that helps. If there's more detail you need, we can provide it.
And then we can discuss maybe the role, like, another time, do you want to roll forward for the, you know, we have to wait until we get the numbers from the.
Yeah, the assessor has to provide those numbers before you know the budget situation.
Yeah, what we're gonna do this year, since this is a reassessment year, we can't, you know, we're following the same procedure that we did last year, but that could all change once we get the numbers from the assessor's office. And we might, y'all might decide we want to roll forward and, you know, so.
When do we get that information, that?
Probably not gonna get it till one.
Yeah, it's supposed to be given pretty soon. But we see in many places that the assessor can't, doesn't, for whatever reason, be not able to meet those deadlines.
Okay.
And when that happens, you naturally can't do what you have to do. And then they have to grant an extension. So we'll see what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, good job.
That being said, I think we're, there's. Yes, I think we. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent, no nays. We are adjourned, and thank you, everyone.